Joe, it's incredible that the Board of Supervisors don't have a Plan B. Knowing that we could have a tie or the budget could have been defeated. We should have had a Plan B. And evidently, we don't for a tie. I can't see how you can legally have a meeting next Tuesday without advertising with notice and what have you.
As long as it's advertised by, I think the cutoff is Friday, Friday or Saturday, we can have it.
But really...
Two different noticing, just want to clarification. Two different noticing, there's a noticing for the hearing itself, so that's a public hearing duly noticed and advertised, which would be a lawful hearing, so we could actually have the hearing. But if you're speaking to the notice of the proposed budget, that's a different issue. By under the Second Class Township Code, that has to be 20 days. So in essence, if there's, if you're saying there are not two proposed budgets that have been duly advertised under Second Class Township Code, I'd say that's legally correct.
So I would have expected that if the proposed budget was not agreed upon, that there would have been others brought to the floor.
Well, there was at the November meeting, Mark Toad.
Mark did, but we have two people tonight that have voted against it, but really haven't come forth with alternatives. So I would say at 9:37, that why can't the Board of Supervisors vote to pass the budget and then do whatever mop up you need in the beginning of the year? That seems to be a very efficient way of handling.
It's a logical way.
It's logical. A few other comments that, that was my main issue, but a few other comments, we have a couple of people here sitting in the front row that work in the office. And, you know, we did have a township manager. And we chased her. Yeah? I'm talking about Joe, we chased her. And then we had another employee that we chased her. Now we have some very competent people, you know, when somebody said, "Ooh, about a thirty-three and a third percent increase." You know, that may be a high percentage, that may be a low amount of money, I don't know. But we have to retain good people. So let's pass the budget, work on it next year, and we can all go home.
Thanks, Ed. Mr. Scott.
Chair, my solution would be, should you make a motion to pass the budget, last year's budget?
I will not make that motion.
Well, that's my solution.
It's not, it's not legal anyways, it hasn't been advertised for 20 days. This hasn't been advertised. The budget that is in front of us right now has been advertised, has to be advertised for 20 days.
And it has to be balanced. It has to be balanced.
Oh, so then you're telling me last year's balance wasn't, or last year's budget wasn't balanced?
Balance, that's an issue.
World of Budget, that's a question. Well, I'm just trying to come up, then you present a budget that does not have a real estate tax.
All right, I'm gonna try one more time to get us out of the meeting next Tuesday.
Joe, I can't just procedurally, I was just thinking about the dates, if the organizational meeting is of 4th January, and that is also advertised as a regularly scheduled meeting, which I think is booked in last year, the budget can be amended during that meeting and it just has to be up for public inspection for 10 days, and that can be acted upon, voted upon prior before February 15.
January.
February, they haven't, the Board has until February 15 to act upon.
If we open in January.
If it's open in January, it has a month of January, but as early as January 4.
What are you gonna say?
Could be acted upon as early as January 14, I guess, give or take date for public notice.
Chairman?
If it opens again in January 4.
What are the restrictions?
I'm reading right from...
It can't be raised by 10%.
It can't be raised in excess of 10% in the aggregate.
Or reductions, is there any?
There's, the code is silent as a reduction. Completely silent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is, are you planning on having a meeting between now and December 31st, 11:59 PM in the evening? Are you planning to hold another public meeting?
Not if we can pass this right now.
Because I don't think we should rely on Mr. Toad.
I agree.
I feel very confident that he didn't show up here tonight for the reason that he was against it, like Mr. Porter, and I'm not, but he's not going to show up at another meeting the rest of this year. So we're stuck, when I say stuck, we are with four elected supervisors that we have to work with, not relying on Mr. Toad. He is not gonna, what are you gonna do? Even if he does come in, he's gonna vote no, because he's already said that. So we can't count on him. Chuck, I'd like to ask you, you were the tiebreaker last month, vote yes, bring it up, when Mrs. Culp comes on the board on January 19th to look over the budget. But I would like to suggest that Mr. Porter, Mr. Kilgore, and Mrs. Culp, you sit down between now and January 4th and you come up with your budget, because I'm hearing that nobody, you might have questioned the budget, but no one put in writing something that you could physically look at that said, "The road department's gonna be cut here," or "This is all we're gonna give." This is the police department. I just heard we're $228,000 more this year than we were last year for police department. The office manager, or the office, the roads, you mentioned $500,000, I think the time is setting in there. Excuse me, you, this has been kicking the can down the road for years, not maybe with the last six years, but before, we weren't maintaining our roads. You've heard about what's happening over in Brook Crossing. I live on Mount Carmel Road, it's like a disaster. You go to Fairview Road where Mr. Dick Vermeil lives, it's even worse. If you don't wanna fix the roads, take them off, take them off like Westmore Road that township does, and you don't have, make them private roads. We don't have assault and sooning, we don't have blacktop. That's all you have to do. Bottom line is, you've got fixed, so I'm asking Mr. Kilgore, please, vote yes, right now, vote yes for this budget that we have, and reopen it up when you'll have, Mrs. Culp, Mr. Porter, and Mr. Kilgore will be there, and there, again, I'm advising that they wanna open it up, but they'll be able to make, there's no word that says they can't decrease it, Mr. Attorney, there's no reason why they can't decrease it to the same as what 2015 is, but if they wanna only increase it by what 2015, they can only go by what?
10%.
10%?
In the aggregate.
Well, whatever that is.
24%.
Bottom line is, let's, you know, as we are, it's 9:44, and we need to have someone break the tie, and I said I wanted to see 100%, and what you do in January, that's up to you, meaning does the board be...
And I'm, Mr. Kilgore also, I'm asking you, Ed.
Yeah?
I'm asking you to vote yes.
So, Ron, the problem is, is like, do you reopen the budget in January?
Do you reopen the budget in January, you're not able to effectively address where some of the problems might be, because there's the money already, and there's clauses in place that prevent possibly any type of cuts at that point. So there, really, the increase is really in areas that you can't address once the tax is passed and there's money. So you have to, there's not much, where are you gonna cut? You know, if you're not willing to cut tonight, like, where are you gonna cut? Where are you gonna cut paper? You know, where are you gonna cut pencils? I mean, we have a 19% increase in one department, we're having increases in other departments. If there's no cut and it's so far up at an upper scale compared to surrounding municipalities, where are you, if they wouldn't cut tonight, where do you think they're gonna cut in January?
You tell the road department and make it know this.
It's the Public Works Department, they were the road department a long time ago.
Make the Public Works Department say, "Okay, this is all you're gonna get." Instead of whatever his budget is, you're gonna live within this.
No, they're union, they don't union, they went union.
No, 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 I'm not talking about salaries, I'm talking about the actual money that it takes to run the department, not their salaries, I'm talking about blacktop, I'm talking about gutter, headwinds, runoff, you just talked about whatever it was with runoff, or whatever it was, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Storm, storming, you're not gonna do it, we're not gonna do it for 2016, just as you didn't do it for 2015, and backers, same way with the office forces, I don't think, I don't know what you're talking about, 33% increase.
Not with Easter.
Huh?
It's not with Easter.
Okay, well, then why are you taking it out on them?
I'm not, they're not the secretary, there's another secretary that, that was the 33% increase.
Well, is she here today?
I don't know.
Is she employed?
I don't see her at this point.
Is she employed?
Yeah, she's employed.
When is he?
Then do what you have to do, but the bottom line, bottom line is, just don't spend the money, as you said, you don't have it, and then next year you can lower the pay. Come on, Chuck, Peter, Chuck, please, I'm asking you, as a former supervisor and someone who's lived in this township for 74 years, has paid taxes in this township all his life, is if you touch, pass this budget and give it over with.
And Chuck, I'm asking you not to. I'm a township supervisor, a knowledgeable auditor, and I know what's going on. Don't let a person who had to go to court to redo the budget, because they too underestimated you. Now, Pete, I beg you to not institute a real estate tax, and I asked the other two gentlemen to cut the budget so that we do not have a real estate tax.
I mean, Joe wants to ring up the motion again, I've already said my piece on it, I will be dealing with a different set of residents when that tax is passed, they'll be coming over the year, in the years to come, they'll be coming in, at least in the last two years that I have, there's gonna be a whole different set of residents that are gonna be really ticked off, saying, "Hey, we didn't owe the meeting, you guys kind of slipped us through just before Christmas, it wasn't fair." There's gonna be a lot, no, you watch, Ed will be coming in.
Excuse me, Mr. Porter.
Yes?
Every year this goes on as clockwork. Mr. Porter, this goes on, it went on before I became a supervisor in this township. Every August, September, they sat down, even when it was held in my attending's room, across some triple fresh, when there was only four seats there, ours and the three quarter supervisor, and they sat there and they come up with a budget.
Okay.
Every year they do it, now we have a computer that you can go on to, and you can read about this stuff. It doesn't, you don't, you mean, we have to advertise, you advertise...
It's my mistake, I didn't know.
My mistake, not...
No, I didn't, I thought I'd be dealing with people mad about a tax, I guess I'm...
No, I don't think you're gonna have people ahead at you.
That's good.
I don't think you will.
I don't think I'm gonna.
And just, just for clarification, Ed, 'cause you talked about limitation, I just wanna be clear, 'cause the limitation, Charles' question, was in terms of upward, not in terms of downward, the Second Class Township Code says in Section 3202- subsection D, during the month of January, next following any municipal election, which would be like next year, the Board of Supervisors may amend the budget and levy, and the levy and tax rate to conform with it's amended budget. There's no limitation legally on that, other than if it's amended upwards, that the 10% limitation's there, and the 25% for any...
That's the only restriction I see.
All right, I'm gonna try this again, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2015, I'm sorry, keep doing that, make a motion to adopt the 2016, November 24th, 2015 budget as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I tried, I tried to call Mark and he didn't, I've not heard back from you yet. Are you guys good with next two tonight? Obviously, Mark is the person who counts unless one of you guys change your mind.
You gotta say one last thing, this is a resident, not a fire company. Get off at his shirttail, you haven't said a damn thing tonight. You just sit there, ride along, Ed says a lot of good stuff, you don't say anything, you don't come up here with any plan, this is ridiculous.
Chairman, make control of this meeting, that's an attack on the ground, he shouldn't be subjected to that.
Sure, you attack everybody when you talk.
I don't attack, I give facts, I give facts.
I'm not sure what I, I'm not the smartest guy, I'm not gonna say this straight up, I'm not. But if you guys don't do anything, and you meet us the way we are now, and something goes wrong, really wrong, are you cool with it? Are you good with that? You said, "How humanly possible?" You're giving good advice and you're digging in, and that's fine, I dig your fight, but you're doing nothing, you're even a screw. I don't get that. You said you wanna make changes, you guys don't make the changes, we impound you to do so. All we're asking for is straighten out for now, we'll fix it later, and if you need extra help, guess what? You got me free, I'm in your back pocket, anybody needs help, and there's a lot of people that know me, I'll bring the wood, I will help you. Not to do anything sucks and is wrong, it's just wrong. To say that it's too big, we can't fix what happened, okay, fine, get us straight and let's figure it out the rest of the way. We don't spend it all, put it in a rainy day fund. Real simple, man, you know, I'm not asking for much, just do the right thing, pass this thing so you can pay the people that you need to pay. It's too damn hard if you don't do it the right way, and it's been done wrong in the past, fine, let the past out. Go forward, this is not going forward, this is standing still, which means you're going backwards.
Thank you. Do you think you need Mark? Mark, yeah. I mean, I literally...
Who? Where's he at? We'll go fine. If he's away to town, we'll go fine, I'll bring the wood.
He's missed the last three things.
Fuck, so then what's he gonna do next Tuesday?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, this is a man that's...
No, you don't need Mark, he can change his vote, you can change it regardless.
Yeah, but why would you ask me to change my principal, or what I've campaigned on, or what I've been doing ever for four years? Why would you ask me compromise?
I'm only asking you to pass the budget so that we can get square, and then you can say we won't.
I know, I can't tell you everything, but we won't.
You're not telling, I don't wanna know everything, I don't need to, I don't need to, you're intimidating, you're trying to intimidate us, and I'm not trying to, just like those guys back there, and I'll tell you this, you're not intimidating, bro. I feel your fight, but you're going down the wrong road.
No, I'm not, there was no intimidation.
Okay, we're saying you're gonna ask more taxes next year, that's an intimidation, that's a saying, saying, "Oh, don't vote, we're gonna come for you again."
Oh, government doesn't do that.
They all do. Everybody gets intimidated by somebody, everybody pushed down by the small, but I just want you to do the right thing, these people that get paid...
I never used the word intimidation here.
It was thrown around a lot, it was thrown around a lot tonight.
No, I have not intimidated anybody.
Okay, you didn't use it, other people did, but I'm just saying, you're saying we're gonna ask more taxes next year.
No, it's a possibility.
If you fix it, if it's a possibility. Possibilities? We could have a foot of snow in February, and you're not gonna be able to pay anybody.
It's a strong...
Yeah, it's a possibility, we got a rainstorm, and something can happen, and you're not gonna have the money to pay for it.
I understand that.
So then when that happens, are you gonna be able to stand there and go to Congress and say, "Well, you know what, I didn't wanna pass anything, and now I can't pay for it? We're gonna call the government, they don't have any money either." Just do the right thing, get it done.
Yeah, the Commonwealth hasn't passed their budget yet either.
And I'm not happy about that either. We all can commiserate on that shitstorm.
Sure.
But we're in a different one right now, I'm just saying, humanly possible, pass the vote and be done with it, and then we'll fix it. You've got 365 days after it passes to fix it, and you can change it in January, a little bit, right? It's not the end of the world, it's not the end of the world, brother.
I'm not saying it is, I'm not saying it is.
What you're saying, I can't do anything about it, you can't.
No, I can do a lot about it, I'm not, I don't have a majority of the board to really address some of it.
And we don't have 20 days for the change of another budget? You gotta work on it since August.
What, do you, you have the faith that the Board has been actively working on that budget since August?
Not really, no, I don't.
I mean, I'll...
But we're up against it, we're ninth hour, we're there, you gotta, you gotta get straight and move forward.
This township has basically spent 45 minutes to an hour, a few times, for budget form shops that came up, and we would spend about half of it on the same question.
And, okay, is that, is that the agenda going forward? Is that the agenda going forward? No, that's what happened in the past, I'm saying, look forward, he just said he'll come every night, every, one night a week, so to hit, there's your start, there's your start, fix it that way, one night a week, and I'll come too.
All right, Mr. Scott. We're gonna end up after this, Potty, Potty have a comment too.
What are we living on in this township? What are we living on in this township? Tell me, what are we living on in this township for our means of income?
Earned income.
Earned income, thank you. The budget, this is from our website, 2013, actual, you received $1,268,611.69, that's your figures that you actually received. In 2014, you actually received, received $1,569,470.58, that's around $300,000. And if somebody can add quicker than I am, John Sly, give me the exact number.
I'll let you listen to you.
Huh?
I'll find your...
I'll get your calculator, Ed. That's for 2014, 2015, you actually have, have received, actually as of right now, in November 24th, $1,464,229.96. And you're budgeting only $1,550,000 even for 2016. We're living on earned income tax, you've heard people say that not everybody pays it, they have it structured so they don't have to pay it. You heard Mr. Vermeil saying that he can afford, he's one of the property owners that had bought on the King Ranch, and he's not here, but he's one of the more affluent people that we have living in this township. He pays probably little to nothing in earned income tax. Property, we're going to get it, our earned income tax has not increased as our expenses, even if you have been cutting back. The gallon of gas is different, the supplies are different, everything has gone up, everything has gone up.
It's coming down.
Well, gas is coming down now.
Diesel fuel's coming down too.
But diesel fuel is what we're running, is still pretty high. Bottom line is, our earned income tax is not keeping up to our current spending, and you have been kicking the can down the hill, not doing certain things in our township. We know that, so please, again, Chuck, I'm asking you to vote yes to get this thing through, and then come back in again, what's not working out, you have to put a real estate tax on at some point. And I know the people of supervisors, school board members, that everybody doesn't wanna be the bad guy and do it, but when you're down to the last bullet, you've got to do something. And I just don't understand how you can sit there, Chuck, seriously, you haven't said too much, the last meeting that I was there, nor tonight, Ed has spoken, but no one has come up with a budget that's different than what is done. Line item by line item, there's your figures, your earned income tax is not paying the bills that need to be done to keep this as a second-class township with good roads, I'd like to say excellent, good roads, and everything that needs to be done on a daily, monthly, and yearly to maintain this, including our township building. What needs to be done in that township building that you're not telling us? Or there's problems with the roof, electrical, plumbing, handicap accessibility, egress, you tell me, what do we have to do there? If somebody comes in and tells us that this building does not meet code, what are we gonna do? What are we doing about the stormwater runoff in these township roads? What are you gonna do with Mr., with the Brook Crossing? How are you gonna repair that? You let the ice and snow and stuff get up there this winter, which right now we're not having, but I can almost assure you that before March and April, we're gonna have some kind of freezing, and that's gonna take money, and if we don't have it, the $300,000 is gonna be gone, and now we're going to be broke. And as a former businessman, proud of it for 30 years, I know what it is to work with a budget, and how you have to work things around, and you know what? When I started doing portable fire extinguishers, I was charging 25 cents a unit. No one ever complained that I got up to $3.25 a unit, and yes, there were some of my businesses that had 500 and 600 fire extinguishers that I maintained at that price, along with other things. They didn't complain because they knew they were getting the service, the same as what we expect up here from the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry that I've spoke maybe six times here tonight, but I'm a little fed up with what's going on. Chuck, I'm asking you to please change your vote to get this thing over with tonight, when I'm showing you that your earned income tax is not going to hold up. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Scott. Potty.
We do not have a budget by December 31st, it's a term we can pay nothing as of January 1st, including payroll.
Yeah, I mean, at that point in time, you did have an honor-approved illegal budget, so, but what actions you could take to pay for that budget?
Is that then considered bankruptcy?
So the procedure is to adopt a balanced budget, shall adopt a balanced budget by the end of the year, the procedure for opening it back up or admitting it is in the new year at this point in time, but that's what the law anticipates.
So you didn't address her question.
I thought it did.
Are you gonna continue if the bound, if the budget is not balanced, or it's not approved, you're still gonna have payroll, you're still gonna pay the police?
We can't pay. You have to have a balanced budget.
Well, is that what the lawyer said? I would love to hear him say that.
Chief, wouldn't it go by the previous budget, just like we're doing that with some other areas, wouldn't it go by the, I mean, how is the Commonwealth paying, it hasn't passed the balanced budget, and it's still paying everyone? So wouldn't we go by last year's budget and continue at that pay scale, and then hopefully have something worked out either next week or like definitely first two weeks of January?
I don't know what their Enabling Act is in terms of their requirements for a budget, I can tell you that the Second Class Township Code says it's a...
Yeah, it says so, but it doesn't say that no one gets, it doesn't say that no one gets paid.
But it's an illegal budget at that rate.
Or a continuing budget, in a sense, a continuing budget, I mean, it's just the rates are set at that point, but then like, we'll be pretty sure we should be straightened out.
You have to pass an approved budget for each year, that's, it's an affirmative duty under the code, that's the way.
Chairman, I...
There's no passive, there's no, for the Second Class Township, there's no passive language.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
We won't have another meeting?
Yes.
So, you know, what could I do?
Give me one second.
Sorry.